For waiting, I'm going to call the Mashpee School Committee Business Meeting of July 23, 2025 to order. It is 5:44. Again, thank you all for your patience. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who live and are sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Okay. Next, we are going to ratify the agenda of July 23. It is a fairly light agenda, so I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to ratify the agenda of July 23, 2025.
Thank you, Kelly.
And I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. All right. Next, Approval of Minutes, June 11th, pages 1 and 2 of our packet.
We're skipping public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have anyone for public comments tonight? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Now, we're going to do the Approval of Minutes for June 11, 2025.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 11, 2025.
I will second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
I vote yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
I also am a yes. All right. Again, thank you for patiently waiting, Mr. Disorga, but we would like to invite you up, along with, I see you've got Mr. Brian Brody and Ms. Ayesha Sharfi. Very excited to hear what you're about to talk about. You can pull up a chair. So you can all three sit.
No, it's fine. We can sit all day.
Fair.
Thank you. My name is Richard Disorga, and I'm with the Mashpee Historical Commission, and I want to thank the school committee for putting us on the agenda. We wanted to make known and express our appreciation for the partnership that we have developed between the Historical Commission and the school through the History Social Studies Department with the Mashpee Middle High School National History Honor Society under the leadership of Mr. Brian Brody. As you know, this is the 250th anniversary of the start of the American Revolution, and the commission wanted to make sure that there was some type of townwide recognition of the event. And we wanted it to be an educational tool for the townspeople to realize the important role and the sacrifice that Mashpee made in the American Revolutionary War. And as you probably also know, two years ago, we completed a war monument that lists the individual names of everyone from Mashpee that served from the Revolutionary War through the war in Vietnam. And it included 15 that gave their life for their country during the Revolutionary War. All were Wampanoag. And we wanted to focus on the sacrifice of those 15. Our plan was to develop a booklet that could be distributed throughout the community that would highlight the 15 and make their lives known as real people who lived, loved, and laughed, and then left their homes here in Mashpee and went off to fight and die for their new country. We also wanted to involve the youth of Mashpee, so we contacted Mr. Brody, who was very supportive and who, as advisor, thought it would be a great project for the History Honor Society. He recommended the then-president of the society at the time, Ayesha Sharfi, who worked with us as an intern all last summer. She came into the archives a couple of days a week all summer long, and she took the research that we had when we developed for the war monument, and she expanded it. And then, Mr. Brody had all the History Honor Society members work on it throughout this whole past year. He can explain in a second the type of research and work that they did. But speaking of Mr. Brody, I want this, and I hope this committee and the school system appreciates the asset of having someone like Mr. Brody in our system. The knowledge he possesses and the relationship with and respect he shows his students and in turn, the respect they show him, is what is so special in education. So I want to thank him personally for all he did with this project and all he does for the students here in Mashpee. So in the end, we were able to produce a 32-page booklet, which I'll give you in a second, that outlines the 15 from Mashpee who gave their lives during the war. Then it gives an overall view of Mashpee's role in the war, and then it lists the particular battles and places that involved those from Mashpee. We were also, through Mr. Brody's contacts, able to involve and work with the third-grade students at the Wampanoag Weidemuth School, who were asked what it was like to be a Wampanoag warrior at a time of war. And their drawings are located in the booklet as well. We thought it was very important involving the very young students as well. The booklets are currently available to the Town Library. Due to cost, we're asking it be one copy per family. If we run out, we have a commitment from Kathy Mahoney and the Friends of the Library that they'll produce a second printing of that, and you'll pick up the cost of that. So I want to give you a copy while, if Brian could tell a little bit about the work he did and the students did on that.
I'll be relatively quick. First, really, Ayesha deserves a lot of the credit, both from her beginning as an intern. It was actually quite easy for us to, we had a good framework from which to start. And for those who are in the schools regularly, you know that the students in the Honor Society are the same students that are captains of the sports teams, presidents of their class, so on and so forth. I mean, Ayesha was president, pretty much, or vice president of every club, class that we have. So rating them all in, and it was difficult, so all of our students had small parts. But I really, I do want to emphasize that Ayesha really played a huge role in doing that, in trying to keep 20 high school students on track, even with the small task. As far as the research for us, the difficulty was there was not a lot of written documents left. So a lot of the research, as you read through, you'll notice we say most likely they served in this battle. What we did is went through the offices, we learned a lot about military history, we learned a lot about military ranks, trying to determine where these men may have been at battles and potentially where they may have passed away. A lot of them did go to places like Valley Forge, some may have been at the Battle of Monmouth. Most of the time, it appears that they were stationed in the northern areas of New York, up along Saratoga and part of that campaign. So for the students, it was a great experience. They got to really dig into some research, see some of the challenges, and also to see some of the inequities on the research. It was a lot easier to find more material about white soldiers than it was to find about Wampanoag soldiers. And we even discovered that very few of them, in fact, Richard, you correctly, maybe one, received a pension. And that was something that did not always occur for some of the white soldiers during the revolution. So it was very interesting. It was a good learning experience. And as Richard said, we were able to work with the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribal Education Department, so the tonic Hicks Green there helped us out. She actually translated the title for us. And it was Tia Parkman's third-grade class that did the drawings. Ayesha, do you want anything?
You got it.
We just have one more kind of exciting, special honor to announce, and I ask Ava Costello, who's the Chair of the Historical Commission, to do that.
I'm trying to make sure I don't let the chair scoot out from underneath me. As Richard said, I'm Ava Costello, and I'm Chair of the Historical Commission. And about 2017, we decided on the commission, we really wanted to do an outreach to the community. And so many people, you get, you start to talk to them about Mashpee history, and they say, "I didn't know that. I didn't know that." So we came up with an idea for us to emphasize on a formal matter, the people who we've come across who have helped to preserve, helped to advance the knowledge of the Mashpee history. So we decided we would do an annual Historic Preservation Award. That the first award we gave out was in 2018, and that went to Earl Mills for his work with preserving the parsonage, as well as Frank Lord for his work with the schoolhouse. So I'm very happy, and I have invitations for everyone here, that this year's Historical Preservation Award is going to the Mashpee Chapter Ro'Kappa National Honor Society for all of the work that Ayesha and the students did to produce the booklet that you now have in front of you. And we will also be giving an award to Tia Parkman and her third-grade students for their beautiful artwork that's at the back of the book there. So we're very happy to announce this award. And it's part of, we've been working with the high school. We had students who did the addition to the one room schoolhouse. And if you haven't seen it, I'm sure Richard, who does this tours on Tuesday, would love to see you. And the students who worked on that project won one of the awards because they were the ones who worked and put the woodshed, thank you, on. And just since I have you talking a little bit about Mashpee history, when you go into the one room schoolhouse, you will see beautiful desks, and those desks were made by, did you see the class? And they recreated the internal workings of the schoolhouse. So we have a lot to thank our school students for. So I will give you a copy of the invitation, and it'd be lovely to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kira, we'll start with you. Do you have anything you want to, any comments or anything?
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's very impressive just looking through the packet, all of the resources you're able to find. Yeah, it's really impressive.
Dan?
I'm very talkative, so I usually have a lot to say. I just, tons of gratitude for each and every one of you. I think that stuff like this doesn't happen unless, on all sides, there's excitement and desire and wish to want to do this. And I think I've said this to you before, Ayesha, I look forward to working for you one day because you are like a powerhouse. And it's super exciting to see everything that you've done to impact our district, impact our community, and it takes folks like you, you know, the desire and energy to do really, really amazing stuff like this. So thank you for your commitment. Thank you all for your commitment for the Historical Society. I've been to one of those tours and went with my daughter's class recently, and you had to deal with me asking a million questions and never shied away from talking about the inequities and, you know, the systematic oppression and all those pieces that are a part of our history. So it's being done very beautifully. So thank you, thank you, to all of you.
Kelly?
No. This is really cool. The war memorial that, you know, was put up at the Common Green in Mashpee was one of the most amazing things I think that this town has ever done. But this right here, in reaching out to our kids in our school, if you look behind you, it says Mashpee Public Schools, a connected community, that's what it's about. So teaching our youth about the history of this town and how we got here, and unfortunately, the hardships that the people that started this town went through is amazing. And you know, you are just an amazing woman. You are going to conquer the world. And just remember where you came from when you do that, and come back and let us know how you're doing, and, you know, put us on the map more than we are you are. And Mr. Brody, you are amazing too. Your dedication to these kids is unreal. I hear it from them. I hear it from the staff members, and now we're hearing it from the rest of the community. So thank you for, and we're going to be very sad when you retire too.
Shh, that's not happening. We won't let it happen. Yeah, I'm going to echo everything my colleagues have said, you know, first to the Historical Commission. Thank you for having the foresight to try to incorporate students of our town in learning about where they live, where they go to school, and what it is to be from Mashpee. As someone who grew up in Mashpee also, I mean, the archives used to be the library, so I used to go there every weekend, like, all the time. I lived in that building. But the one-room schoolhouse, like Dan, I went when my daughter had her field trip there, and it's just seeing all of the ways that your commission has tried to bring the students in to make history more living. And Mr. Brody, I mean, Kelly said it all, but you're an asset. You're a complete and total asset to our district, and your passion for your career, your love of history, it's infectious. And I thank you for all you do for your students because you go above and beyond all the time. And this is just one more way that you're showing how you do that, so thank you. And Ayesha, I said it the other day when I saw you, but again, you're going to be awesome, and I can't wait to see what you do. And this is just one more, like, step for you to say, "Okay, I did this. What's next?" So please keep doing what you do because that's what's going to make a difference in this world. And the more we know our history, and the more we know where we come from, the better we can move forward. So thank you for helping to corral your fellow students into doing this work. So again, thank you all. This is, I mean, unfortunately, I'm going to be taking my Girl Scout troop to Canada on Saturday, or Sunday, so I will not be able to attend, but I hope some of my colleagues will be able to be there. So again, congratulations to all of you. I don't know if any of the administrators want to add anything on there, but feel free.
So as a former history teacher and self-proclaimed history nerd, obviously, I love this. I can't wait to just take it home tonight and read it. But in my entry into the Mashpee Public Schools and the Mashpee community, I've heard consistently about the significant level of support that our community has for our schools. And we've often talked in those conversations about ways to get our students even more involved in the community and giving back. And this is a perfect example of working in partnership with a community organization and then bringing, you know, helping out the community as a whole and then bringing this information back to their own peers. So thank you for all the work. I'm excited to meet with Ava. We just spoke. And again, in my entry and trying to meet with everyone, I just haven't set up that meeting yet, but I look forward to working with the Historical Commission and partnering. But thank you, Mr. Brody, again. You have a lot to live up to.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm told that you should bear high standards. And Ayesha, thank you for just being an example of the greatness that is Mashpee Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. Love those kinds of things, so make sure everybody goes to the library and gets their one per household copy. All right. Next up, we have the Report of the Superintendent, so Dr. Conners, who's yours.
So I apologize that the screen is so far away. I will get better at planning ahead of time. My goal is every time, well, at every meeting for the Report of the Superintendent, that there is a visual component to it. Probably comes from me being a visual learner, but also cognizant that we are here for the community too, and I want them to be able to see what we're doing. Now, let's just make sure all of this works. Okay. So first and foremost, I want to introduce our newest members of the leadership team here at Mashpee Public Schools. Trish Hill, to my right, is our new Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Amy Benner is on this side. Sorry, Monica. Our Director of Special Education, Monica De La Hoya, is our Director of Finance. And Jane Redmond is our Principal of the Casey Pooms. She could not be here tonight. She's at the Massachusetts School Administrators Conference in Florida, that we're fortunate enough to send our leadership to every year. So so far, it's been amazing. It's day 22 officially, not counting, just amazed at what we've accomplished so far, 22 days. Want to kind of bring you back a little bit to my entry into Mashpee as a candidate for this position. And you might recall the Spiral Bound booklet, I mean, I'm sure you have it memorized, it's such riveting reading. But Phase 1 of my proposed entry into this work was really about engaging with our stakeholders in our community to get a better understanding of the strengths that others perceive, you know, in our relationship, the Mashpee Public Schools and our community, those opportunities for growth, and then those non-negotiables, like, no matter what happens, we cannot lose sight of or we cannot let go of A, B, or C. And so given that that was the proposal, the stakeholder engagement and community immersion, first of the stakeholder engagement, the task was to conduct those listening sessions, students, families, educators, community leaders, and really being mindful of inclusivity and representation of all that is Mashpee and its diversity. And to build that trust, to build those relationships, is incredibly important, especially in a time of such significant transition in Mashpee Public Schools, with a brand-new, all four of us the top tier of Mashpee Public Schools, or Brandon, well, second tier, you all are the top tier of Mashpee Public Schools. And so I'm just being very cognizant of how that probably feels to the community as a whole. And so one of my practices of transparency and communication and keeping you all updated of the work that I'm doing is our weekly bulletins, the informational bulletins that get sent out to you at the end of the week. But for the larger community, just to give you a snapshot of those stakeholders that so far we've been able to meet with during our meetings, from Finance Office in Town Hall, our South Court Falcons, the Boys and Girls Club, Mashpee TV, it really runs the gamut. And we're not through. Cape Cod Collaborative, the Kiwanis, Town Manager, Today with the Select Board Liaison to the School, Tracy. So just really, then tomorrow, School Resource, Susie Brooks Technology, next week, Mashpee Chamber of Commerce. And those are just ones that are currently on the calendar. There are still more. So if you haven't made the list yet, don't worry. There is just a great deal of groups that I'm really trying to meet. But part of that stakeholder engagement that you haven't seen up there yet is the students, families, and educators. It's July. It's a difficult time to pull those groups together, but it is still very much on our radar. And so trying to capitalize on those groups that are most accessible and available in the month of July, and then recognizing that as August is upon us and our students and families and teachers are around more, then I can start to engage there as well. The second part of this first phase was that community immersion, really taking those opportunities to attend the events out in the community. During the school year, certainly, it's natural and normal to attend a lot of school events, but there are also those community events where our families and students aren't present. And that just gives me the opportunity to listen to stakeholders, also in a different environment that is not our school's, or my office, or their office, and just get to see the other side. It's so great to see students and families outside of the school environment. So so far, these are the four community events that I have been able to attend, or that have been held, or are being held soon. So the Powaw was such an incredible experience. I'm so honored that Brian was able to extend the invitation to all of us to get there. I believe we were all there, enjoyed some excellent, excellent food, and just being part of the tradition of the grand entry was amazing. The Boys and Girls Club Teen Center Open House, seeing Trevor as the youth of the year is quite an honor as a Mashpee alum. The Zip Trip is this Friday, Mashpee敲门, so I can't wait for that. That'll be fun. And the Mashpee Night Out is next week, August 6, I believe, and as more community events. I cannot, like you, Kathy, I cannot attend the Historical Commission on Sundays, because I'll be out of town, but looking forward to more events to come. So Phase 2 is next, but I circled the second part in RED, Policy and Program Review, because we've really already started that work. The last two days, Monday and Tuesday this week, Amy, Trish, Monica, and myself met with Principal Redmond, Principal Brady, and Principal Switzer to start looking at planning for the year and entering into this work together, also in preparation for our larger leadership days next week. So we've looked at the bridge plan. We've talked about how we operationalize that bridge plan. We've talked about the budget and resources and what that looks like. And they're very well aware of my desire to be fiscally responsible, my goal, not my desire, it will happen, and really looking at the money that we're spending and is it having a positive impact on students, as it should, and what our district goals are, what are our school improvement plans, and are they aligned to those district goals. So that work has started, but the data analysis and the organizational assessments are starting to come as we start to engage more with the building leaders, the instructional leaders, as more data becomes available from the state and our MCAS, we really, that work will start to pick up more steam in August. And the organizational assessment too, I think, will come throughout the year. I do believe that our district review, which we'll talk more about in the coming weeks, will give us a lot of feedback on areas relative to our organization. That is all in terms of that piece. For my update in the transition, for personnel update, we are, I think I approved 16 hires today, a lot of those are coaching positions, so don't worry. So we are looking good. We still have some vacancies. I think, and Amy can certainly, Dr. Benner can speak more to this, special education teachers, especially our pre-K and our earliest learners, those are becoming, we're finding are challenging to fill. It's not something that's unique here to Mashpee. But I'm fortunate that Dr. Benner is working with the team and thinking outside the box to ensure we have qualified adults to support the needs of our students. But we are close to being completely fully staffed. Any questions?
I have, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Go for it.
Light agenda, lots of words. So thank you so much for the report, and welcome to the new team members. Couple of thoughts that went through my head is, thank you for already starting the stakeholder work. I think that that clearly is super important to us as a committee, but also what we've heard time and time again is the desire for our community members to be heard. I guess a recommendation on my end is that we do have some individuals who have been very vocal about some of their challenges, frustrations, discontent with some of the work that we've done and some of the administration and previous district leadership. So my hope would be that not just for current families and caregivers as part of our school, but being able to figure out who are individuals who have had some of those pain points in the past, and is there an ability to better understand what their experiences were, to inform the work that this leadership team is going to be doing in the central office, I think would be really important. So I think that as a committee, we have some individuals in mind that probably would be a font of information for you all. And we, at least personally, I would hope that we'd be able to carve out some time to hear their voices and understand, and maybe not repair those impasses, but at least be able to help them understand that we do value their thoughts, and that we want to improve and grow upon what those prospective missteps were in the past. So just putting that out there. Also, with the phased approach, I really love it. I will also say that I know for me, it's important that I would love to see and hear what the central office and the building administrators are going to be doing around your own culture, right, and what that means for you guys building a relationship and a working allyship, because the tone, obviously, of the central office permeates out into not just the schools, but into the community. And I think that there have been some growth opportunities in the past around the culture of the central office and figuring out those shared values and leadership skills and styles. And so I think, you know, being able to have a plan around that, as you all are establishing in your roles and working relationships, would be helpful for me to understand how we take those wins and then kind of communicate that upward to us as members, committee members, but then infusing that into the work that's happening within the schools. So putting out that request as well. And I also recognize that, especially with big transitions in leadership, being able to get support from the committee will be really important. So I would hope that you all can vocalize what those needs are and what guidance or support, or whatever you need from us as a group, because we don't want to just be here as figureheads. We want to be here to be supportive in whatever. as figureheads, we want to be here to be supportive in whatever those desired steps are for you all. So this is not a false promise, but a true desire to say, what can we do to support the work in that, in this transition time? So then that way, you all feel supported as well as you come into this. Okay? And then, my little notes here.
He's writing along the edges.
Thinking about opportunities as well, I know our PTOs and Booster Club have found that engagement from families in their own work has been very scant, but thinking about ways in which the central office can work alongside the PTOs to build some more of that upward feedback and support. I would also encourage, obviously, team members to work with those individuals from each of the schools to build some alignment there to mutually help each other out with that feedback loop. So I will relinquish the floor. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those very great points, and I reiterate all of them.
I was going to say, Dan is the official spokesperson. Welcome, all of you. It's wonderful to have you all sitting in the same room. Monica, can you come sit over here? You're late.
My fault.
But it really, no, it really is. And one thing that you'll learn about this town, like Dan had said, like, they want to know everything, and that's not possible in most cases, or in all cases, I should say, there are stuff, but being able to have that relationship with them and reach out to them and having an open door policy, communication is key. We all understand, the three of us sitting here and the two that are missing, that, you know, there's some things that just, there's laws we have to follow, there's lines, you know, drawn in the sand that, okay, we can't go over here, we can't over there. In the past, it has created, you know, animosity from, you know, our stakeholders, from our community. But just being, being there and listening to them and letting them know, you know, no matter what, we're going to get to the bottom of this, we will solve this issue no matter what we have to do. And I think that's a lot of what this community is looking for. You know, working together as a team, putting our best foot forward, you know, and trying to come to the same end goal. And that's our kids, that's the students, taking care of our staff, have that open door policy where, you know, if, I'm trying to think of, Mrs. Shabakal wants to come in and have a conversation with you, you know, don't be standoffish and just be open to those conversations. Mashpee is a great place to be, it's a great place to live, it's a great place to work, and it's a great place to raise your family, engrain yourself in that, honestly. These people will show you the love and they'll show you their dis, their unhappiness at the same time. But as long as we keep pushing forward and we communicate with them and we let them know, yes, we are here, we are here to listen, you know, I think we'll be good, I really do. But welcome aboard, it's exciting, I can't wait to see what we can accomplish. And on to you, Ms. Kathy.
Actually, Kira, as the student rep for our Student Advisory, I don't know if any, you've all met Kira Duvall, she is our, she's the chair of the Student Advisory Committee and our student rep, so, Kira?
Yeah, question is to each of all. I guess moving forward, having like a new leadership team, not just like within like the higher parts of like the school district, but also on the Student Advisory Committee, we have a lot of new members. And I'd love like, starting next year to really build strong connections with the new leadership team, to connect back into the student body and make change like through the student voice. Because despite being the chair, if I don't hear voices from other students, like, it's not just a one-person thing, it's a lot about connecting with the different clubs and organizations and the different leaders through that and then just being a person to speak on it. So I'd love to connect with all of you and all the other students, I feel like it'd be really great to start with you.
Yeah, I have plans. I think, you know, Student Advisory Committee, you guys play a crucial role of taking the work we do here with the administration team and bringing that back to the student body. And we, I've already talked to the advisor for the committee, so we've got plans, don't worry. But again, I'm going to echo the welcome, and I think I sent, you know, a welcoming out to all of you, but now officially face-to-face welcome. I'm very excited for you all to be here and feet on the ground, and I'm excited to see how we're all going to move forward. So as Dan said, I'm going to echo that, you know, we're here to support you as much as you're here to support our students. And, you know, our role as school committee is obviously to give you the means to do your jobs and make sure that those things are in place and for our students first and foremost, but also for you and your careers as educators. So again, thank you all for picking Mashpee and applying, and here you are, so, yeah, to the future, let's move forward. Excellent, thank you. Anything else? All right. Miss, are you, sorry, are you doctor or miss?
Monica.
Monica? I try to like acknowledge, like, the hard work is out there, I try to acknowledge it. So, all right, we are, our new Director of Finance, Monica De La Hoya, here, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, we have a little packet, and we turn to the school budget to actual, which is the first page. We haven't closed yet, but it's as hot off the press. As you can see, I try to, I keep Ashley's format, so it's not something new, it will become my own, not moving very far from it, maybe just adding something. I don't know if we want to go line by line, if we have any questions.
Are we, so all of the encumbrances are still coming in, and do you, when are you expecting to have it closed out for the year?
So the encumbrances were due yesterday.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that I had them in, so you could see it. It's almost done.
Okay.
I just don't want to seal the bottom line yet until I have spoken with Dawn and we have made the final moves, because School Choice is going to be covering the bottom line.
Yep.
And, yeah.
And can you refresh us what we were anticipating, our value that would go against School Choice to what we're currently looking at?
So the 454.
Yep.
That you see negative on the right side would be going against School Choice.
Yep, and I think when we had, and do you, sorry, I'm having a little bit of a brain freeze, what had we thought we were going to see? Do we know?
Seven hundred thousand.
Okay, so this is less than what we had anticipated?
It is less, but if you look at the line under out-of-district tuitions. We can't pay prepaid, I guess it's not, I'm learning what Mashpee does. We are not able to prepaid tuitions from the previous year. So we're hoping that maybe part of what we're not using in School Choice can be put towards that. We don't have a final number for FY '26, but it seems that School, out-of-districts is going to go up considerably.
Thank you.
And sadly, FY '26 is already, and we're starting to work on '27.
Yep. October will be here before we know it.
Yes, I know. The next page is the ending balances for the revolving accounts. The following is the School Choice balance, what happened this year. I was mentioning to Dan at the beginning that School Choice is coming down, we have the HVAC project, and I already received a work order, a work change, or amendment, like they call it. So, yeah, that line is going to be dwindling.
Are we going, we're going to be able to maintain though our floor that we have kind of set of 250?
Yes, yes. And then the next few pages are our budget transfers. I guess I've been very generous with line by line. And you may want to look at them, this is just to cover the deficits that some of the lines have.
And you need a vote on this tonight, correct?
I do.
Yep. Those were increases, so the DPW must have, Kelly's asking about on transfer, what is this one, oh, it's, hold on.
Twenty-five oh-two.
No, but they're all twenty-five oh-two. On the second page, under budget increases, the building maintenance increases, I'm guessing that's just, there were extra charges for cleanup or maintenance.
According to the budget that I have, there was no budget for the, the building repairs and like the biggest one cost.
Because the building repairs should be done by the DPW.
Correct, but this is the extra stuff that happened during the year that was now budgeted by DPW previously, so.
It could have been from the, like, different thing.
Like Rissens assign for Quashtick, I think is one of the, one of the issues.
Oh, okay.
So there's fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for the KCC building maintenance and seventeen thousand dollars for the high school building maintenance. Quashtick's the smallest amount. I would honestly, because from my understanding, and maybe I'm understanding it incorrectly, the buildings are taken care of by the town. So I'm not understanding why we're, why the school department is paying for maintenance when that's supposed to be taken care of by the town.
There are some that are split costs, though, and there are certain items that are split costs between the school district and the town. It's just a matter of what they're considering, the maintenance, what, how that.
Would it be, would it be possible to get like?
A breakdown?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, because I'm looking at enough or nothing, the, the building maintenance at the high school and the building maintenance at Coombs, did that have to do with work that was being done and that's why those costs went up? Because we had the roof that got left open at KCC for the HVAC project that incurred damage, and then the fire at the high school in the roof that incurred damage, so that's, I'm just trying to figure out where those, those are some pretty, to me, that's a lot of money.
We also had some vandalism, though, too, if I'm not mistaken, earlier in the year at the high school at least, if that was this year, I think, that might have, like, things like that, I think, to come into play. So, and I could be wrong, it could have been last year, but I know there were some costs with some of the repairs that needed to be done on certain things that weren't DPW, but do you feel that you need that information before taking action on this? Or, okay.
I would, I would just like an explanation.
Okay.
Like I said, because my understanding was that any maintenance that does get done in the buildings is the town.
Maybe a silly question, are they coding times in which the schools open in non-traditional school hours as maintenance? Because I think of events that have taken place across both schools, is that being put into this value as well?
Like the custodial pay and the.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Like I think of, you know, a lot of the school events and things that are taking place on Saturdays, Sundays, et cetera, could that also have added to it?
I'll get to the breakdown. I was trying to give you the last.
No, no, no.
This is perfect.
No, that's fine. Like I said, it's not going to stop me from, I just, I'm curious.
I think it's important for us to know, too, as we're learning this, what the details are behind those numbers. Because again, I'm, I will be fiscally responsible, so I want to know where every, how are we spending every dollar? Because things are, it's not always going to, again, it's not always going to be this good. So if we have a very strong handle on it now and those details, then we can start being proactive.
Yeah, and like I said, I know there were some things that are considered split costs where the school district picked up a portion, and it could be some of those items, I'm blanking on exactly what they are, but.
Yep.
As long as everyone feels okay to vote and is okay getting that information after, I feel, you know, I know, I trust that Ashley's been informing you on what was there and that, you know, how it all was left, I feel confident in what was left for you to inherit, so, yeah, so.
I also spoke with Catherine, and she was very clear about what goes in and not in terms of, and what she did mention, that whatever is charged to the schools is whatever was not budgeted on their side, that just came up during the year.
Yeah.
But I'll get to the, the information.
Thank you very much.
All right, that being said, any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the budget transfer request.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the FY '26.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, I'm sorry. Budget, school budget transfer request.
Thank you, Kelly.
And I will second that request.
Thank you, Dan, any further discussion? Hearing none, Dan?
I vote yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
I also am a yes. Thank you very much. All right. Moving right along, specifically, so we didn't really have anything unfinished from our last meeting, so continuing on to our new business, the FY '26 School Committee Agenda Calendar, so two years ago, we kind of drafted this kind of calendar that kind of is like the normal timeline of certain things such as budgets and different things that the school committee does on a regular basis. I believe what we have before us is this current year's proposed, again, always subject to change, but some things are, you know, set in motion by either the charter or just the town, such as the budget specifically. And we are asked today to vote on this, but again, it is always a living document and things can change on it at any time. Certain pieces, again, are suggested, like working group or subcommittee meetings, so that if you're on any of those, you might want to mark your calendar for some time in that month. I'm sure Sheri will reach out like she always does to coordinate the meetings, but Dr. Connor, do you have anything you want to add to that?
This, I find this just very helpful for my own, looking ahead on, you know, tapping the right people to ensure they're ready or just, it's definitely very helpful.
Yeah, I find having a future agenda report listing is helpful for all, so that we kind of all have an idea of like the milestones.
Yes.
So, any questions, changes, Kira, did you get a chance to take a peek at it? Does it make sense?
I'm having, again, I don't know what's going on with my brain today, but I feel like we had discussed putting on a standing agenda item for a particular topic, and now I can't recall for the life of me what that standing agenda item was, but I know it is missing from this outline.
Yeah, you're right. We have the tribal education department has a standing. I'm going to have to go back and read through my notes.
Okay.
Or unless you think of it beforehand, but.
If we could just pin that down and then incorporate it into this, I think that would be really helpful. I'm sorry for the lack of remembrance.
That's okay, no, it's, I recall, yes, we did discuss it, it's just what was it, and I'm also blanking, so. Okay. That being said, entertain a motion to approve the School Committee Agenda Calendar.
Madam Chair, I will make that motion to approve the 2025-2026 Mashpee School Committee Agenda Calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, Dan?
I vote yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Okay, next up, the Mashpee School Committee met with the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Council on June 25th, 2025. The meeting was, in my opinion, very successful. I felt that we were able to discuss some really important topics. The Tribal Council had kind of a list that they provided us of topics and items that they would like to work with the district on, which was very helpful for the conversation, I felt. We have kind of, you know, just as a follow-up for public, I did reach out kind of immediately after to our Select Board Liaison, Tracy Kelly, and Select Board Chair, Michaela Wyman-Columbo, asking to kind of start talking about that MOA that was discussed for use of the buildings for tribal educational programs and waiving the. and waiving the fee that the town typically charges for use of the building, just because those students are students and it's an edge, as long as it's for an educational program, there's no reason why the town and the tribal government couldn't have that MOA of use of the building without that cost. So, I need to follow up on that, just full transparency there, and I know Dr. Connors and I spoke about that as well, and we, we kind of talked about following up on that. Some of the other pieces were a little bit bigger, might take some more time, such as, you know, getting the, getting the state's Department of Education to kind of acknowledge the tribe, tribal recognition, basically, as opposed to just how it's listed now. So, some of those pieces are going to take some time, but we are all working on them. I know Dr. Connors told me in one of, in our first one-on-one, that she was already working on the form for students when they come back to school to get the, the permissions to share that information, so.
If I could jump in just on the form, so I am meeting with Susie Brooks tomorrow, and the main, a lot of things I want to talk about, the main focus first is the forms. Both, as you recall, at our joint meeting, I believe it was Natana who had mentioned, she, and I think Kathy, you even mentioned, like, you, you go to, you have to download the PDF, you have to fill it out, fill it out, download it, print it, upload it, just all the things, right? For families, and a lot of us do things right on our phone, and it's just not while you're in line at the grocery store or something. So, we are, want to investigate a way that, there's what's called JotForm, obviously, we have Google Form, but it maintains that PDF format and you fill in the fields and hit submit, so there's no uploading and downloading. So, that is one piece of it. The other piece is, as we talked, while it might be hard or a lengthy process to get the designations changed at the state level, at least internally for our own data collection, really working on sparsing out, you know, if you don't just pick Native American or Pacific Islander, that we're able to dig a little deeper for, you know, getting a true representation noted. So that, that is what we're going to, the first two things that we're talking about tomorrow.
And then, again, bigger picture items, we're going to be probably meeting at some point with Monica to talk about that Indian education grant and how to, how to put that back in the hands and, and, you know, how that all looks, what that looks like currently, what that will look like, and how to transition that eventually, whether or not.
Also, so that, and so, in digging a little deeper and in even further conversations with the Indian Education Department, with Roxanne and her team, I started thinking about some of the feedback relative to the Indian education grant and the uncertainty or sometimes lack of clarity on how is the money being used, how is it truly impacting our tribal students? And how are we accounting for that growth and whether or not what we're doing is having an impact? So I just started, you know, talking about some ideas on ways to ensure that we are being held accountable for meeting the needs of our tribal students here in our, in our Mashpee Public Schools. And for example, just one example I gave is looking at our incoming fourth grade students from Novino School, right? Who've not been with, you know, in the Mashpee Public Schools since pre-K or kindergarten. And through initial screenings, what are, what are any gaps or where are those opportunities to excel? Because they're going, students are going to come to us in a variety of places so that we can then truly target interventions, whether it's accelerated learning or filling in some gaps, we're able to do that. And then we've got data points to say, this is where they started, this is what we did in response to that data, and here's where the students are now. We also talked about ensuring very clear tracking in terms of, not tracking, monitoring of attendance so that it's a classroom setup and it's a schedule and it's not, well, I'm going to go, because my friend Trish goes to tutoring. And not that it's been loosey-goosey, but from what we were hearing from them and conversations, it could be tightened up to greater, greater support the students. And data is a foundation of many of the grants, and they want to see the money that you're using really having an impact on student outcomes and, you know, wanting to do all this without creating additional burdens on leadership and teachers in the schools. So how do we take that on and put those systems and structures in place? So thinking about that first and then, as we look to examine, does it make sense to, to move the grant to them? Or does it make sense?
Exactly.
So, working on that.
Excellent. So, yeah, and both of you were there, and I don't know if you have anything you want to share on that, but that's how, I, I felt it was a very productive meeting and I always enjoy that time and appreciate the invitation that is extended to us to speak to their government, because it's really what we're doing, so.
It's, it's on the way, of course.
Please do, yes.
It, it really is, it's an experience in itself to sit in the room with them and, and just listen to what they have to say. I think a lot of their concern is the lack of representation within our district. And that clearly is not something that's in our control, you know, if we've got qualified people that are Wampanoag, that come and they apply for jobs. I mean, I'm trying to think how many we have now, Mary Kate, how many, do you have, you have two at Coombs?
Two and Alexi.
And Chris, yeah, so there's three, okay. So, you know, Coombs has, has three Wampanoag tribal members. And their kids reach for them, along with the other kids. You know, I'm not sure what Quasnet has. I know the high school, I think, has one or two tribal members. I'm thinking maybe just one. But incorporating, you know, their everyday, what they're seeing and, and I guess it's with anybody. You know, you look for people that have the same interests as you, that look like you, that talk like you. You know, is that a way where we can engage the Wampanoag students more? This is my second year as the tribal liaison for the school committee to the tribe, and I really reached out to Roxanne to say, what can we do, what can I do, what can I bring to our committee, to our leadership team to say, hey, this is what the tribe is looking for? And how can we help you? And I know one of the things is their lunch bunches and not being able to get funded for that. You know, is, is there a way that we, as, as a district, can help them with that? Not for nothing, Talia's not going to stop, she's still going to come, you know? And again, it's not just the Wampanoag students that are benefiting from these things, it's all of our students. You know, they can bring a friend with them, you know, maybe tutoring's not the right place to bring their friend to, but, you know, they're lunch bunches or whatever the case may be, to try to support these kids and, and make them feel like they belong here. I think is, is honestly their main concern, and that's been their main concern for a long time. So as long as, you know, we keep doing what we're doing, you know, and letting them know that, yeah, you do, like, this does matter to us, it really does, and we want to help you. How can we help you? I, I think we're, we're, we're going in the right direction.
Thank you. Dan?
I will piggyback off what Kelly shared, and I, what I heard in this meeting was a little bit more than just the diversity aspect, but also not just being called to the table to sit, but being able to eat at that table, right? And I think what we heard from their desire to take over the grant is the decision-making of what the needs are for, of their tribal students should be driven by their community. And that is still lacking, and I think it, I think being able to provide spaces for that feedback and to help nurture that along is really positive growth. But at the end of the day, I think, in their viewpoint, understandably, it still kind of subverts the desire to be able to be the lead in helping to create those interventions and appropriate tools to support their students in our school district. So I'm really happy, Dr. Connors, that we're taking those steps, and, and I think that, you know, being able to take a look at that and better understand how we prospectively could provide them that locus of control, again, would be really important for, for them, given all the systematic things that they've faced in the past. I think that what also struck me in the meeting was being really open and prepared to figure out the intersectionality of where the work that they're doing can really increase the educational kind of experiences, again, to Kelly's point, not just of the Wampanoag students in our school system, but the overall community. But not continuing the pattern of our district of expecting that without costs associated with it. Because any other consultant or resource or team that would come in, we would appropriately fund those, and we have not done that for, for their tribal community. So, you know, to that point of building systems and budgets and things to really appreciate that. And I would personally take it one step further of saying, they've, we've been very blessed as a district to have a close enough relationship with the tribal community where the infusion of their culture and their history has really positively impacted our, our schools. And I think that we can take that platform, build upon it, and then use it as a strategy and a tool to welcome in the other cultures of our student population. So I would hope to see us improve our connectedness to our tribal community. But then, how do we expand upon that and bring that framework in for our Cape Verdean, Portuguese, Brazilian, Hispanic, Latina, Latino communities to be able to do similar type modalities and interventions with those particular populations as well? So, my two cents, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and again, it was, it's always an honor to be invited into that room, to have that opportunity, to have that sharing of ideas, and I, I think we're moving in the right direction, and again, we're just trying to make sure we're doing right by all of our students and acknowledging where we can grow. So, thank you for coming to that meeting and sharing your thoughts during that meeting. Next up, just a reminder, we have our School Committee Retreat on August second from nine AM to twelve PM at the Kenneth Secum School Conference Room. Sean, and I'm blanking on his name now, from MASCR Field Rep, will be present to do a brief presentation on the role of the School Committee, just to kind of refresh us all on what we as School Committee members do with the new administration. It might be good for all of us to refresh on that. So when I saw him Saturday at the collective bargaining boot camp, I kind of said, hey, what are you doing Saturday, August second? And he was like, I'll come down, so he will be here. And then, we'll also be kind of talking about the district review that Dr. Connors is going to introduce, and we will be reviewing our self-evaluations, which were, if you haven't looked at the results yet, or if you, I think Sheri shared them with all of us, but if not, you'll get them in advance. Interesting, I'm going to try to get some graphs so that we can visualize it instead of just seeing this long list of numbers. But some, some growth areas in some places, we still probably all need to put our heads together and figure out how to work, and then we'll do our goal setting. So that's kind of what the outline for that day will be. So, please, 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 please. Huh?
We?
What are we eating? I don't know, Sheri's going to take care of us, I.
All right, Sheri always takes care of us.
I have a feeling there will be delicious treats for us, definitely some fruit. So, that being said, are, does anyone have anything that the chair did not know in advance? Dr. Connors?
If I could just, a couple points of information, just want to bring to your attention. So, as I, sometimes I may over-communicate, but I think, you know, being transparent is important. Principal Brady approached me with a request to make a shift in homeroom time at Mashpee Middle High School. It has been traditionally in the middle of the day, and it's just not meeting the needs of the students and for a variety of reasons. And so they are proposing putting those ten minutes back at the start of the school day. Certainly, research supports that for a variety of reasons, opportunity for breakfast for our students, opportunity to check in and be welcomed by staff, be really ready to start the day, so it, it just sets the tone. I did meet with the union president this morning to, to let her know, because I didn't want it going out to teachers before the president knew and before you knew. So, just wanted to let you know that we're making that shift in the schedule, no other impact. We also did, were able, or they, were able to put four-minute passing time back into place. So, that will be a benefit to all. My understanding is both teachers and students will appreciate that.
Now we're going to get the bathrooms open.
I was just going to say, so when are we going to be beginning of the day?
Eight-twenty to eight-thirty, yes, yes.
So there should be no reasons why, like Kathy just said, the bathrooms aren't opened and they are staffed?
Well, I didn't say staffed, I just said open.
No, I know you said open, I'm saying staffed.
We can bring that up, but we'll, we'll put that on a future talk.
Yes, please. And then, the other, of course, I didn't bring my stick, you know, where's my? Maybe that was, no, there was a. Thank you, May.
Yes, I think that's right.
May the Fourth be with you, yes. How could I forget that? So, May Fourth is a scheduled half-day in Mashpee for professional development. As the leadership team came together to meet the last two days and looking at the PD calendar, to be very thoughtful in our planning, we recognized that AP testing is May Fourth all the way through May twenty-second, that includes makeup testing. And those days are very prescribed by the College Board, even down to the day a makeup test occurs. So we were thinking, all right, well, so May Fourth, we have, one of our largest AP exams is administered that day, which is the US History Exam. So we tried to look for some alternatives. We don't want to ever give up, Trish mentioned this, I don't want to give up a PD day, none of us do, but trying to just force-fit a half-day and to have a half-day just wasn't having the outcome that we desired. We already have a half-day, PD day scheduled for April, and then there's vacation. Adding another half-day in April, we want to be cognizant of our families and the impact that half-days do have on them. Plus, the calendar's already gone out, so people have already planned for some things, so to take it away and put it somewhere else. So in the end, we just landed on, we are going to have a full day of school on May Fourth, and would not make up that half-day somewhere else this year. But what we have committed to is when we are at the point, both as a school leadership team and as a school committee, of looking at next year's calendar, we're going to ensure that we've looked across all testing dates also, so that we don't run into this again, and we're able to, not that there wasn't thoughtful planning, it's just one of those, there's so many details, especially at that secondary level, that sometimes something slips through the cracks. So I just wanted to inform you of that change. So, we will, by early next week, get all of that information out to families and to teachers.
Because we approved the calendar for this period, do we have to?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so I guess at our next meeting, if you could provide, just because we can't put it on the agenda, because the, our retreat agenda's already been posted, so, yeah, if you could, if that could be added to our August, just to ratify that change.
The retreat agenda has been posted.
Okay, well, if it hasn't, then we can throw it on.
Oh, throw it on there, okay.
If it has, though.
We'll put it on for the next, okay. So we'll wait for formal approval before any communication.
Yes, please. Thank you, Kelly.
Yes, thank you. So, I'm also, if the agenda hasn't been posted, if it has, I think we'll wait till the, the August regular meeting, but just an update on the, the title of funding, where there are gaps could possibly be as a result of current administration policies. So just want to give an update there and then talk through with you all how we want to communicate that to our stakeholders.
Any others, since we're talking agenda requests, anybody have anything they want to? I know, Kelly, we talked about CPR training, which will be on the August meeting. Dan, anything you need on the August meeting?
No, I, I think just, you could.
Or a future meeting?
A future meeting, I just want to continue to take a look at our student numbers in association with, long story short, are we continuing to lose students of color, given the current climate? Because we were starting to see at the end of last school year, a drop in our numbers within the schools, and the feedback was that many folks were kind of leaving the district because of fear related to safety. So just wanted, want to get a sense of where we stand with that and with our enrollments coming into the school year.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, for sure.
There's so much coming down from the state, from the government, like, starting to look at things. I've shared with Dr. Connors a couple of things that I have seen coming through that, like, pop up on your screen, you know, the cell phone policies, the CPR training, that type of stuff. I give Kathy a lot of credit for trying to get all this on the agenda and not keep us here until nine o'clock at night.
It's not really for, we've got to put those to those subcommittees, so that's probably what we'll be doing in August, just curriculum, we'll probably get a couple things and that. You know, we'll, we'll get some things delegated to the people who need to really dig into it and move forward.
And we have Mary Wareback for EIB data analysis, and we've already met with her, and already, we will be a very structured role with deliverables such as that, those things, common things we're looking at in that data, equity audit, that type of work.
Perfect, thank you.
Excellent. Anything else? Kira?
Yeah, I just put, there's like a typo or something on the Mashpee School Committee Agenda Calendar for the retreat. It says four to seven. It says four to seven P.M., but I haven't mentioned-
He said nine to twelve.
Yeah. And then it says, and, and, oh.
Thank you for catching that, Kira. All right, um, if there is nothing else on our agenda this evening, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kelly.
I will second.
Thank you, Dan, any discussion? No, okay, Dan.
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
I also am a yes, and we are adjourned at six fifty-four P.M. Thank you, Mashpee.